The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, July 9th, 2020.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll be a pastor with them. Here is Emery.
Yes, thank you, Lord. Always inviting the pastor to come and begin the meeting with prayer. Let's pray. Dear wise and loving God, I just want to say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work with the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so in your bountiful and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for Mayor Ethan Robertson, with various levels of city officials, Bernie Flankis, Kurt Carson, and Spear, Kim Allworth, Michelle Beecher. I pray, Lord, that you give them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I pray that you give them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. You give them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in this task. Lord, we thank you for blessing our town of Ely that we've had very few cases of this COVID-19. And, Lord, we look to you as our provider and thank you for watching over us. Bless this meeting, and, Lord, may your wisdom be given to those here in this room. I pray that they, in Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We're unable to hear on Zoom.
We'll see what we can do about that. Thank you.
I agree if you don't hear anything.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me okay? Anybody? Anyone? You hear me?
Give us one milk and we'll get it unmuted.
You are unmuted.
How does that work?
Thank you, much better.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll move on to the roll call.
Mayor Robertson.
President.
Councilman Knight.
Here.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Allworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Bieber.
Here.
City Attorney Townsend.
Here.
City Attorney Travis.
Here.
Public Board Supervisor Gray Craft.
Here.
City Engineer Almerick Abson. City Fire Chief Rivera.
Here. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public comments, item two. Please state your name for the record, and we'll ask your questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Caroline McIntosh. I'm associated with the White Pine Boys and Girls Club. And I appreciate your consideration of the letters that Councilman Allworth has regarding the additional expenses that the Boys and Girls Club will in, uh, have to enhance with the pandemic. The club will have to sanitize. It will require more personnel. Prior to the pandemic, 107 children participated every day in the program. And with the new regulations, it will require sizable investment in sanitizing and masks, which are much more expensive for children, and also more employees. So I appreciate any consideration that you could give the Boys and Girls Club, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, to help our children in White Pine County. And this is opposed for the COVID money. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, this is Kurt. I have a question.
Sure.
Is it open right now or is it closed due to COVID?
No, it is open.
Okay.
And we really appreciate the help on hospitality of White Pine County School District. However, they're under the rules of the Nevada Department of Education. And all of our, all of our students are wearing masks. And there can only be 10 students or 10 people in a room, which of course requires so much more as far as personnel. And again, many thanks to White Pine County School District for allowing us to use their facilities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Caroline. Here in the room, Melody Van Camp.
Melody Van Camp. Last year in Maine, former city attorney Chuck Rogers and myself traveled to Las Vegas, meeting with Mike Williams and the S&amp;S attorneys. An agreement to end the ongoing lawsuit was hammered out. The city would lease to Mike Williams the 120 miles, 29 miles of ground for $50,000 a year when the cost of living increases. The city would retain the utility right away. Williams would buy outer share or half the track for $500,000 with the stipulation that if the track is removed, it would be replaced within three years. The city would receive a percentage of commerce on the track. And of approximately $479,000 maintenance bill owed to Mr. Williams, half of that would be forgiven with no more attorney fees. The agreement was voted on and accepted by the city council in June 2019. And a good faith settlement was presented to Judge Deresview. What was left? The city would then draw up a new contract, and we would be done with the lawsuit, attorney fees. And for the first time in 20 years, on this so-called 30-year contract, the city would actually see finally some revenue along this line. This was an agreement between Mike Williams and the city P League. Mr. Williams would have to deal with the foundation on its own. The foundation wanted nothing to do with finding an end to this expensive lawsuit. Last year, the council scrapped our decision and joined the foundation to further this lawsuit. And where did this decision get you folks? Certainly no revenue, more attorney fees, and don't forget the $479,000 maintenance bill you still owe us. Last week, I retained a copy of the decision from Judge Deresview on the lawsuit stating that the 45G tax credits cannot be used as revenue. Will there be an appeal on this issue to the tune of more years wrapped up in this lawsuit? And don't forget more money. I hope you folks do not cave in to the big dreams of Mark Bassett and the foundation and turn over the city's assets, AKA the North Line, to that bunch of thieves, the foundation. Over the years, the foundation has held secret meetings that did not include two representatives from the city of Ely. Lots of wheeling and dealing. And I'm sure the secret gatherings are still going on. Please think before you hand over our assets. The North Line belongs to the city, and we have no clue how the foundation wormed their way into the North Line. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on the phone?
Um, yes, Mayor Robertson, I'd like to address you and one more, the city council, Mrs. Marietta Henry. I'm the chairwoman of the White Pine Horse Races. I've been working very diligently with our board with Dr. Dana Bune. This is our chief health officer for Bune. And we have come up with a set of guidelines for the horse races. And I sent that, those guidelines to Jennifer Lee. She was going to read them all to you. And also read them and also give you a copy for your files. In addition to what Dr. Bune and I came up with, we are going to use the same procedures that Evanston Wyoming used last weekend, which is to make sure that we take temperature of all the participants and the guests. As they come in every day, they will be issued a specific colored brick fan based on that day. And, um, the temperature that Dr. Bune has set is 104. If anyone is above that temperature, we can wait a moment and retake it. If it's higher than that, then they will be asked very nicely to leave. Um, we, today I received a phone call from Ryan McIntosh. He is our state gaming control board representative. He represents Bune and Elko as far as the horse racing to state game decisions. Uh, the chairman of the gaming control board is Sandra Douglas Morgan. And she was concerned about, of course, once they came out, that stated a few individuals that tested positive were not in quarantine. I know that has been expressed. And, um, I know the city, the sheriff, and the county are all working together to come to a good solution to this problem. But I just wanted, if nothing else, to let you know that we do have guidelines. And, um, they should be presented to the town, to the gaming control board. And we are going to follow the rules according to the GUTs and the data. And we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we're going to have a success on these.
Okay. Thank you, Marietta. Any other public comment on the phone or in the room?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Mr. Mayor, on your street department report, the city is considering, considering doing a rewriting on a section of that land between the prospect and the green machinery, along with the soil stabilization to prep for a future chipper plant. That project needs to be done under general equipment. Not all of that road section is paved. And the dismal curb, gutter, sidewalk, already gained compliance. The traffic in that area is too heavy for just a chipper plant. It appears to be on the sweetheart project. You need to adhere to adopted city standards, Mr. Mayor, CIP. Mr. Mayor, the special vet license you approved, do they have this state business license, state sales tax number? Road closures are made with all council people's approval. Are you rewriting the ordinance on your own? When did we change the procedure? The business license was issued to settle with the home occupation. When was that home occupation approved? They have a state business license. I haven't missed many meetings. I don't understand that. Mr. Mayor, was the total debt to date for the historical railroad, was the total amount paid to date for legal fees involving the S&amp;S lawsuit? Was the bond acquired by the bookkeeper accountant who was in charge of collecting the railroad monies from the S&amp;S short line? If the bond was acquired, did anyone file an accident loss or pullback either by the city or the railroad? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Beecher, Councilman Allworth, you all have fiduciary responsibility to the city. There may be minions and lost revenue and illegal fees involved in the city and the railroad. You have an obligation to the taxpayer to report financial concerns. I've asked in the past and I'm asking again, have you barged and numbered investments in tens of thousands of dollars from the railroad? Is it true? Did the city or the railroad file a claim or pullback? If so, what was collected and when was it collected? Mr. Mayor, beginning dated June 11, 2000, Monday, I reported that I was told that the city paid approximately $16,000 for a curb better alongside the Van Camp junkyard. Once again, I'm asking, when did Johnson put that on agenda? When was it approved and by who? I wonder if the city, current IRS, did not assist in providing business. $16,000, Mayor? Something's wrong there. Mr. Mayor, I reported newer street lights out of the downtown area around the convention center. Some been off for over a year. Now, one defective light was replaced prior to the 4th of July. You need a man, you need a man to experience. And maybe he used to work in the dark, but those of us left in the business community need the proper lighting, which is being paid for. And we're not getting anything for our money. Mr. Mayor, the new parking lot at the convention center does not meet minimum making requirements. The center walkway has not been hooked back in to keep pedestrians off the street. You stated to me that a concrete curb better and a sidewalk required. I'll be back, Mayor.
Okay. Okay.
This is from Dr. Bune. Marietta, thanks for reaching out to me. You strive to make the horse racing event safe for everyone, and that is admirable. As we discussed, below is a draft of the guidelines for the event. Goals: One, provide a safe event in the midst of a pandemic. Two, provide reassurance to the participants. Three, prevent community spread of COVID-19 in the area of low healthcare capacity. Pre-annals: Whereas White Pine Horse Races is hosting mass gathering public event according to current best practices, the staff and participants is crucial for its success, preventing an outbreak originating from the venue and still public confidence for future events. General principles and best practices: One, washing hands. Handwashing stations scattered throughout venues recommended. Maybe a portable sink with water and soap, maybe hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. B, staff working with the public will be at highest risk. Having hand sanitizer available in their workstation will be important. Two, keeping distance, minimum six feet. We discuss marking the floors for light up areas, spread out vendors, bedding stations, with every other service window open. Limit and/or spread out seating. B benches will be marked for visual cue on distancing for the attendees. Three, wear a mask or face coverings for the courtesy of others. A, whereas this is a high-profile event. Encouraging the public to follow the governor's directives as recommended. Direct with 24 required for members to wear masks in public. The directive also lists exceptions, which is why I do not expect enforcement, but rather encouragement. All staff should be wearing a mask. You may provide masks to attendees, but I would still encourage people to bring them home. Best practices under the circumstances also include: Keeping enclosed areas ventilated, including jockey's lounge. Checking the temperature of staff upon entrance. Turn away those with a temperature of 104 Fahrenheit and above. Staff members who feel ill should stay at home. Tips: One, use mass media to advise the public of advanced modifications and practices to be expected at the event and inform the public that: A, use of the mask will be required unless exempt by the directive. B, social distancing will be encouraged and promoted with marked floors and benches. C, encourage those who are ill or exposed to COVID-19 to stay at home. Examples of mass media include local paper, event website, radio, social media promotion devices. Two, signage. I would encourage posting a sign at the entrance with panel information and ground rules to demonstrate the White Pine Horse Races is committed to the safety of all attendees. These may include, I, general principles and practices listed above. Or excuse me, one. Two, direct location of handwashing station. Three, encouraging those who are ill or exposed to COVID-19 to stay at home. We love your business, but we also love everyone else's. If I think of anything else, I'll let you know.
Will that be provided by emails to the council?
Yes.
Thanks. Any other public comments, either on the phone or in the room? Here in the room. Uh, we will move on to item three, Mayor's report, discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of agenda ID. I have one I'd like to review right now. Um, under being in business, number four, I'd like to review that from next meeting, please. Okay. Any objections to that? There are no corrections, I'll let your name over.
So much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Could deal with that. I think we might have moved up to 23rd.
Councilman Spear is asking if the, the letter for the mine item had been asked and moved to the 23rd. Are you asking or you wondering?
I think I read something here that they asked. I have freedom of speech. It's kind of easy to remember. The water results might be back, so. Yeah, you're right. They did say something like that, and they won't have the final decision until August.
Yeah, August 15th. And I'll bring that up under the utility board stuff, too, if you have, if what happened.
Just go ahead and leave it in the table later.
Um, if that's the decision of the board, I, I would.
We'll have it.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I will take a few items out of order, hoping that we can have this a little bit more streamlined. I'm going to do my report under item six. And then we'll go on to the city department report in case any council members have further questions on the items I'm going to bring up on my report for the clerk or attorney specifically. And that way we can keep kind of a linear flow to the meeting here. So I'm going to open item six, Mayor's report. Um, I've got a number of items to report on here. Um, after I finish the item, if any on the council has questions regarding that, if you'd love me to know, we'll discuss it. For item one, on the 4th of July, uh, report for what went on last weekend. Each member of the council was contacted, uh, giving them just an update on what the situation was and what would be happening, uh, what transpired, and, um, Dr. Bune's recommendations that we amend some of the festivities we had. I just want to reiterate that no orders or mandates were made by either myself, uh, the commission, or Dr. Bune. Uh, the county health officer made a recommendation, and the organizations acted accordingly in cooperation for the benefit of our community, and I think that was a very admirable thing. Uh, I gave public, at the, I gave public comment at the county commission meeting on Wednesday, thanking the commission and county staff for assisting in making last minute changes to our festivities. I know the tour and rec department and, uh, Main Street did as well. Having participated in some of those, it was really an all-hands-on-deck effort. With that, and the parade, and, um, other organizations around town that were notified, I think we did a very admirable job as a community, uh, changing some of our plans there to keep people safe. Any questions on that from the council? One on item two I have here. I attended the emergency management meeting this morning. Our local problems with contact tracing were discussed, and the county is working on a solution with the state. The problems we're having with contact tracing, uh, we were told by the state person in attendance, this, these are problems that are happening all over the state. People are being combative, uh, when contacted for contact tracing. They're being aggressive, they're being, um, contrary, they're being abusive to the people on the phone. We did have one local contact tracing person quit over that, which precipitated some of the issues over the 4th of July. The county health officer didn't feel he had the infrastructure to adequately, um, respond to the needs of a pandemic, uh, given that situation. Any questions regarding that situation? Currently, we have, as the volume of tests have gone up, the lag time in results has increased. Some of the pending tests that we have in our community are from as long ago as, uh, as July 3rd, that we have not had test results back yet. We have around 40 pending tests out. Given that today's the 9th, that makes some of those tests nine days old now. And so, uh, Dr. Bune's information that he has, that he's making decisions on, is a week or more old, and we have to take that into account as we're making decisions and, and working with our community here. Uh, the hospital is doing the best they can to keep those tests, um, churning out, coming back. They're looking at getting faster result methods, but none of those are currently in operation yet. Regarding our CARES Act funding, I've been in contact with the lieutenant governor as well as Senator Cortez Masto's office regarding this funding. I feel we should continue to put a plan together as to how to spend that in our community, as well as discussing options with the county on how to best utilize the funds to help alleviate some of our high, our highest local impacts. As of right now, we have not received these funds. I was talking with Elizabeth, the county finance director, earlier today. She's been following with NACO. We're just asking around to make sure we can get all the information we can on that. Uh, city staff has done a wonderful job in researching that issue and making sure that the suggestions we're putting together are in compliance with the guidance. So I suggest we continue down that road. The National Guard, if you're not aware, will be doing the drive-through testing on the 21st of this month, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Another 500 tests will be available. Last time they came out, only 87 people took those, uh, tests, took advantage of those tests. We've been given a little more heads up this time, and I would like to get the word out and encourage as many people as possible to make use of this. It is not as invasive as it looks on the news. They have you put the Q-tip up your nose yourself. It's really not that bad. On the news, they made it look like a nine-inch long, two-by-four, and it's, it really wasn't that bad. It took all of five minutes, including filling out some paperwork, so. Um, I have, uh, city staff has put that up on the website and Facebook, they posted it around. We've been giving that up to news outlets as well. Um, I'd like to also address the citizens complaint process in response to questions the council members may have. As stated in a previous report I made, the city would not be proactively sending letters out or sending law enforcement to each business to inform and educate regarding the state's emergency health directive, 024, otherwise known as the mask mandate. I did say, however, that we would be responding to complaints received regarding the matter using the same process that we use for all complaints received. The process currently put into place operates as follows. A complaint is filed. To ensure that the city is not acting on hearsay or frivolous complaints, city staff verifies the validity of each complaint received. Should the complaint prove to be valid, i.e. that the business, property owner, person, entity, et cetera, is in violation of some applicable code, NRS, or in this instance, an emergency health directive, then the city will send out a letter notifying said business, property owner, person, entity, or what have you of the situation. The letter will outline a prescribed time period in which they have the situation remedied and notify the recipient of any possible repercussions should they fail to remedy the situation. The time period is either set by statute or left to the discretion of city staff to set a time period that will allow adequate time for the recipient to educate themselves on the matter, ask any questions, and if they so choose, work with city staff on an acceptable remedy. I have been asked on occasion, couldn't someone at the city have just given me a call instead of sending a letter? In discussing that suggestion with city staff, there are some very salient points for not doing that. A phone conversation can be misconstrued. There is no record of a phone conversation that can be reviewed. And a hearsay situation could be just as detrimental to the complaint recipient as it could be to the city. With a written paper, what was communicated or not communicated is in black and white. There are dates and language that communicate that can be referred to. As the form letter that was sent out clearly shows, no one's business license was threatened. The language of can, may, and please were used, hardly threatening words. To provide phone calls to someone when the process is to provide letters would be selective application. In regards to the state emergency health directive 024, city staff and myself worked on the form letter to be used. My instruction and wish was that despite the state's declaration that local governments were asked or were tasked with enforcing this directive, and the state stating that they could and seem to be encouraging the poll licenses of offending entities, that was not the tact I believe we wanted to take in our community, nor should we. And we should come up with a formal letter response that was as general and as lenient as possible without legally backing the city into a course of action that we did not want to take, specifically that of having to proceed down a path towards calling a business license. Whether or not we achieved that intended aim has been the subject of some discussion among recipients of the letter, and I completely understand that. The intended aim of proceeding in this fashion, or in the fashion that we did, was to encourage compliance so as to control spread of the pandemic, thereby keeping our businesses and local economy open. Say what you will about the governors and the state leadership's handling of the situation. We all have opinions on that, and few of them are positive. We also have little to no control over it. Ensuring majority compliance and following the directions of our local health officials and experts, in my judgment, is the best way to ensure our community's safety and to ensure our businesses remain open. It has taken businesses and offices a little time to get signs up and processes in place. And it appears that for the most part, our community has and is doing their best to comply with the directive more and more every day as they learn about the particulars. I know this whole episode of the past few months has been taxing and trying financially, emotionally, and physically for everyone in our community, and we are not out of the wood's ear. In advocating for our community and businesses, we also have to recognize that we are not an independent entity. We have to recognize the fact that there are many state departments that have authority and jurisdiction over our local businesses. That being the fact, I still believe compliance and education and encouragement, even through the city's already established complaint process, is our best bet in protecting our families and livelihoods. History will sort out who had the authority to do what and whether it was effective or not. But any tightening of restrictions or closing of businesses now would be ruinous to many of our families. to many of our families. Given that reality, I still stand by my convictions on the issue. That all being said, if the council wishes to amend the process that the city has in place, that is their right and prerogative to do so as the lawmaking body of this city. It is my job as the mayor, as stated in NRS 266.190, to make sure the processes as adopted by the city council are being followed. And having investigated the issue following the letter received from that letter, I am satisfied that the process was in fact followed. I continue to reiterate the need for patience with one another. No one has dealt with this kind of situation in 102 years. Say what you will about state or national politics, on the local level, I have only carried officials and business owners with the best of intentions for our community. If you find yourself getting wildly upset, my advice would be quit listening to news pundits from either the extreme right or left. We are all residents of this community first. Is there any questions from the council regarding this matter?
I got a comment on that. I know we're in chartered areas here and territory, and we're all trying to do our best, but, you know, I got phone calls all day in White High, that's about half the customers, and I'm willing to take those, I mean, this is comfortable territory, but I really do feel honest and truly that this council got not over on that decision. We did not get our input, ask our input, those letters were just mailed out, in my opinion, prematurely. I don't know if that much investigation would have ended up and thought into that letter as it should have, and might be beyond our bounds of thought.
If I can respond to that as part of my report. This is the process the city uses for all complaints. They come in, the city staff reviews them and sends them out. They don't come to the city, they don't come to me, they don't come to the council. This is the process. And if the city staff has to run every letter they send out by the council, and that's the process the council wants to adopt, then that's what they can, but they're going to have to amend the process, in my opinion, for everybody.
I think next week, or the next meeting should certainly involve a review of the process, perhaps in these extraordinary types of circumstances, that if those types of letters go out, in the, I, I mean, it's not the run of the mill, my neighbor has too much trash piling up in his yard situation. I think we need to visit that in the next meeting.
And I'm happy to sit on any of those we receive until the council has a chance to review that. I don't have a problem with that at all.
The conversation we had last meeting, I was kind of under the impression that we're going to educate and kind of see what goes on in the next few weeks. It's going to take a while for these businesses to get a plan, mask, all the PPP, and I think everybody really tried the best they can, so.
Well, the council has had a chance to, I'm sorry.
I just think we, I would feel better if we helped people out, not saying we didn't, but worked with them a little more. Like, you know, to me, reading that letter, it was kind of vague, but as soon as you see the $1,000 fine as a business owner, that puts me through the ruck, especially, you know, a small business owner, working by yourself. They can afford that, they're going to go crazy, run out, try to get what they can, make people wear masks, and I'm not saying, you know, this is right or wrong, but it just, I don't want to use a scare tactic.
Well, in the, as, as the council can review in those, I believe they were providing the form letters sometime on Wednesday.
They were providing the general letter yesterday.
I see. If, if you'll review that. Like I said in the report, the, the language in there was certainly, we provided things you can use. It may result in fine, it's not, it, it was intended to be as, as unthreatening as possible. And if you review any of the letters that we send out for other complaints you receive, I think it was a lot more lenient than someone who gets a trash in their yard letter. Those letters go out and say, you know, you'll be fined $1,000 a day, you have, if you don't comply with it a certain amount of time, the city will go in and backcharge you on your property, and this was, this was meant to, hey, we don't want to use any of the remedies the states have suggested, can we use some other remedy in our code? Whether right or wrong, that was the intent, and if the council would like to review that, like I said, it's.
Yeah, I think.
It's tied within the prerogatives.
I think an issue that I have is when you put in 4-1-1 into the city code, the first words you're looking at is public nuisance. These businesses, a lot of them have taken precautions and have done all that they need to do, or, you know, what they feel they need to do, and simply because they don't have someone standing at the, whatever the complaint list, I'm not going to argue that. But that, that seems off putting to me, and when we're at a time where we're trying to promote people having businesses, that does not seem like a best practices way to deal with our business first.
And some of the responses back, some of these businesses on face value taking their work for it, I think were in compliance. Some of them are turning, but they were doing their best to stay compliant, to put together an issue. And when city staff goes back down or walks through in ten days and they're in compliance, that's where the item dies. That's, that is the process that's in place, and, and that's where we're at.
Can I give my two cents?
Please do.
You know, I, I had several talks with the clerk and the attorney. You know, when I read the one letter, rebuttal letter, the payback, and you read what he wrote, he felt he was in compliance. The other business owner called me, and he brought up some valid points, but I'm not an attorney, he says, I was following the law, it BS. And then, you know, the other five company businesses, whatever, I've heard nothing from them, but again, I agree with what Michelle means. This is an extra, extraordinary type of time, we need to put on the agenda for next time to talk about this, because I feel we shot from the hip too quick. And what's happened on this is, it's happened, we can't do nothing about it, maybe we can, again, you know, I talked with the counselor, and she said the same thing you did, Mr. Mayor. You want to change it, come up with an idea. And, you know, I don't know if we'll sleep over it, but I just think, to the business owners, they were in compliant, compliant.
Well, and if, if the conversation is such, I don't think anybody was trying to be hard-nosed about it, but if, if we also can't, like I said, I didn't, I do not feel, and I don't think city staff felt, that we could selectively respond to complaints received. If a complaint goes received, the city has a process, the staff goes through it, it's a, it's what the council put in place however many years ago, and I don't, I don't know when. But if that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing, and if the council would like to change that, I believe it needs to be changed and amended for any complaint received.
So, just a question, a point of clarification for me. What if they do get a complaint, they go down to this said business, they're in compliance, is it in there? Do they go back in their folder and say, you know, so and so checked on it, it's in compliance, send the complaint people a letter back and say, it's closed, in our opinion, because they are called?
I believe that's the case.
Absolutely.
And that, that's the same with anything. If it's a yard complaint or a dog complaint, and they send by animal control or somebody, and they find out, well, there's not even a dog at this house, the complaint dies, and the letter never goes out. Because the city doesn't send, we don't want to be sending out letters based on nuisance complaints.
Hearsay.
Hearsay or, or anything else.
But individuals aren't saying they're compliant, they're in compliance.
Okay. He asked if we could, because of that next meeting, we'll have a long meeting.
Within five minutes of getting that email, I, I went down, visited Mr. Bass. One of the things, it's been a long time, but I, I've been watching on TV that there's some health restrictions that people can't wear their masks. It lost every case that they tried to force it so far in this country. And this HIPP pay rule, I think, Jim, is right on our, that comes in, and he has, I think one of the things I seen on TV was a class of COVID, they put that on, they can't breathe, they get a type of ventilated.
Technic.
Well, you can't question that person, thought as hell. So if you're running out of your business, I think, this here is really a tough time in the age of you do, and I do believe, if you're divided off, you may need to take a look at this as well, because during these type of situations, we need to have a consensus of the council or a public body instead of putting it all on a snap person.